Welcome, everybody, tonight to our July 7th regular session of the Craven County Commissioners Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Booker.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would stand with me while our county attorney gives us a prayer, and then we will follow that with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Grady.
Sir, O gracious God, you who created us in all the universe are our refuge and our steadfast hope. Giving you thanks, we pray now that you continue to send your blessing down on all the people in this land. Send the light of your wisdom to shine forth in the actions of all those who represent Craven County and in all the proceedings of our government. Strengthen our commitment to build a better county, nation, and world in the present and into the future, a world of justice and harmony. Gracious God, help us to live up to this nation's highest principles. For this and all that we pray, we know that you are with us always, Lord, and will always accomplish that which is good for our welfare and for your glory and honor. We ask this in your holy name, O Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Have your cellphone with you. Please make sure it's on silent so as not to disrupt Commissioners, you have in front of you the agenda for the meeting tonight. Are there any changes, corrections, additions?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second a motion.
And a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Item number one on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, Community Development Block Grant Application. And we have Chad Strawn and Ryan Cox here to explain that to us.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Ryan Cox. He's the president and CEO of Insight Consulting Group. He's here to provide us some background information regarding this opportunity for a community development block grant. And then, once he provides us with this background information, I recommend that the board goes into public hearing to hear feedback from the citizens.
Mr. Ryan?
Welcome. Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me tonight. This public hearing will provide an explanation and provide an explanation and description of funding available under Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Program. That's a lot, CDBGNR for short. The CDBGNR is sponsored and administered by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Rural Economic Development Division. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' views, allow responses from the public to on proposed funding, and to answer questions posed by the public. Approximately $12.3 million will be made available for North Carolina's 2025 Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Program, of which approximately $4.75 million set aside for rural economic rural community development fund for Tier One counties to submit non-housing projects such as public facilities as a standalone activity. In general, CDBGNR must meet at least one national objective of benefiting low-to-moderate-income persons or preventing or eliminating slums and blight. Project activities must benefit at least 51% low-to-moderate-income persons for area-wide project benefit and 100% low-to-moderate-income persons for direct benefit. Low-to-moderate-income households are defined as those households with income at 80% or less of the median income of the county. Area-wide benefit could include such activities as that benefit communities, for example, neighborhood parks. A direct benefit includes activities that directly benefit individuals, for example, housing rehabilitation or housing reconstruction. Types of activities that may be eligible for CDBGNR funding include housing rehabilitation, clearance, relocation, substantial rehabilitation, reconstruction, replacement, emergency repairs, housing development, and/or public facilities activities, and administration of the above activities. Applications are to be submitted to the Rural Economic Development Division by October 9, 2025. Another public hearing will have to be held once specific project activities are identified and prior to the application's submittal by Craven County. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, if you would.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have anyone who has signed up at this time to speak.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the block grant that was just described? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
I have a question. Can I ask the question?
You do have a question. I'm sorry. Mrs. Smith?
Is this only for Tier One counties?
No, ma'am. It's for all communities, but for Tier One or priority.
Okay.
And Craven County is a Tier One community.
Okay. I get you.
Okay. So I made the motion. Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Item number two on our agenda, Realize U252 Presentation. Garrett Bith is coming to give us a presentation on RU252.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for giving an opportunity to talk about something incredibly passionate about and share more publicly with the community about what we're doing here at Realize U. This slide is great. They're working. So Realize U, really, our mission is to help individuals realize their true potential beyond a life with substance use disorder or addiction. Hence, the name that we came up with and called the Campus of Hope because we really think of it more as, well, and it will be here in a moment when we open our new facility, but really a campus where individuals can come, learn more about themselves, learn more about their potential in their life. So we do provide recovery housing. So this type of housing is really the focus and the greatest value add that we provide is by creating a safe, supportive environment for individuals to come to, to live as they continue their healing journey. Really, it's our mission internally to help provide opportunities, to help provide an environment, and to help create or provide experiences where individuals can learn to stabilize in their life beyond addiction and move forward. As a recovery residence, we follow the NAR model, which I'll talk about in a second, but a big component of that is creating an environment and experience where it's resident-driven. So they have to have ownership and responsibility and leave, live, and lead a self-directed life in their recovery. So there's a lot more emphasis on empowerment and encouraging individuals to go out and be able to thrive beyond our program. Really, what we focus on is providing a continuum of care. So if you think of individuals that have struggled with addiction, one of the first places they might go is to treatment or to find support. What we find, unfortunately, is that as individuals go to treatment, they go from a chaotic life to a very high-support, low-stress environment. They create the environment so to be low-stressed. But when they leave there, they go back to the same high-stress, low-support environment they came from. And for a lot of individuals, for almost 90% of individuals, that's too abrupt of a change, and it's something that interrupts their recovery journey. So we really provide that continuum of care. It's a step down. They still get support. They still live in a safe, supportive environment where they can continue to work on themselves until they're ready to live on their own once again. We are a non-clinical facility, but we do provide a lot of support in-house. We focus on many non-clinical services like peer support, recovery coaching. We have an in-house curriculum that we utilize. And part of the creating experiences for individuals is we also do a lot of things together as a family or as a group so that individuals can go out and start to experience a thriving life in their recovery. Again, everything in your life really has to change when you're trying to create a new reality for you. And some of the things that can be the greatest risk are when individuals, they're trying to live their life, maybe they find a job, they get back into education, but then the social life or the social elements of it become a big challenge. Because for a lot of individuals, in years of active use, they've never had to socialize or be in an uncomfortable situation without that. So we create experiences to help them navigate some of those obstacles or challenges. Talked about us being a Level Three, or we operate as a Level Three NAR facility. So back in 2011, this organization called the National Alliance of Recovery Residences came together and they said, hey, there's a lot of sober living, there's a lot of halfway houses, three-quarter houses, different properties and different organizations around the country. Let's standardize what they are doing so that we can use the same terminology across the country. And in that, they decided, you know, there's a lot of different organizations trying to do different things, so let's categorize them in a way so that if we say Level Two facility in North Carolina and Level Two facility in Rhode Island, we understand they're operating as a similar entity and providing the same service. So they really broke it down into four different categories. You have pure run. If you think of an Oxford home, that's more like an Oxford home. It's pure-run, pure-managed, democratically-run. It's up to the individuals in the house to decide the rules, decide who comes in, who goes out, when they leave. Then you move up to a Level Two or monitored facility. This is more like the Reviving Lives Ministries that was here in our community. They're monitored. Maybe they have some in-house personnel, but really their emphasis is on that safe, supportive environment. And then Level Three is really where we operate, and that includes this brings in life skills, personal development, and some additional support like the peer support and the case management that we provide. Anything beyond Level Four or Level Three is really considered clinical, so that would be a licensed clinical facility. A lot of times, people ask if we have a license or how we got our license. Well, as operating as a NAR recovery residence, we are, in North Carolina, a license-exempt organization. So if you look at all the different license exemptions, there's one, paragraph nine, that we fall under because we are a 24-hour nonprofit facility established for the purposes of shelter care and recovery from alcohol or other addiction through a 12-step self-help, peer role model, and self-governance. So not being a licensed facility has some opportunity, provides opportunity for us because it allows us to kind of cater what we do to the needs of the community and the needs of the residents that are in our facility. There's downside, though, not being a licensed facility. We don't provide billable services in-house. So even though some of the things that we do, like the peer support and the case management, it could be potentially billable services, it's not so in our case. The advantage of us having this NAR, so this past year, we got accredited as a NAR facility. That means we had people that came out from Asheville and Raleigh to see what we're doing, go through our policies and procedures, check with our residents, and ensure that we were upholding the highest standards and the best practices. When initially, when we were trying to envision how we, as a group of passionate individuals from the community, could best serve the community, and we're trying to envision what kind of organization or what kind of program we develop, we, one of the things that came up is this long list of things. We're looking at, what's everything that needs to be addressed, or some, every area of life that somebody needs to find support in order to establish a strongest foundation for recovery. And these are the, an example of things that we came up with, and if you're familiar with social determinants of health, you see a lot of overlap here. So what we decided, what we realized was, we need to fill some gaps. We need to provide value where there's, you know, we have all these services in our community already, yet we still have a lot of individuals that are struggling with addiction or struggling to reach their long-term addiction. So when we envision Realize U, we envision it as the web that can connect our residents to all of those services. We provide the safe, supportive environment, and then we ensure that they're being connected with the services and the community that we need. This is the, you know, for efficiency's sake, we're not trying to duplicate anything that's provided in the community. We're trying to make sure that those things that are in the community are fully utilized, and that specifically that our residents get to take advantage of them. We also provide an in-house curriculum that's different than what individuals might get in treatment because it really focuses on, it's modeled after applied positive psychology, and it really focuses on empowering individuals. And there's one metaphor I use often when I talk about either recovery coaching or the recovery residence. I say, if you imagine a hot air balloon, and the altitude of this hot air balloon in the sky was representative of how well somebody was flourishing in their life. Well, if they were to do better in their life, if they were to be more successful, happier, greater sense of well-being, that would be indicated by the rise in elevation of the hot air balloon. There's two ways that you can adjust the altitude of a hot air balloon. And I've never been on one, so I'm kind of going with what I've seen, but I understand that you can drop some weight off the hot air balloon. That'll help you go higher. Or you can add some more hot air to the hot air balloon, and that will create more lift. So what we find, and what I've experienced myself, is that a lot of what people are exposed to in treatment is looking at all the things that are wrong with them, the defects, the disabilities, the challenges, the weaknesses that they have. It's very important because helping somebody work through that is important on their path to a better life. Not a lot is spent on what's right with somebody, what's going well, what are the strengths, what are the experiences that you have, what are the things that you've gained in your journey, and how can we leverage that to get to a better place. So when I talk about all the stuff that we do in-house, that's what it's focused on. It's strengths-based, it's positivity-focused, it's about emotional resilience, it's about empowerment, it's about creating the self-esteem and the self-confidence that individuals can use and leverage as they depart our program. As far as our admission criteria, these are really what we, this is what our current residents is suited for, set up for. So at this time, we do only take males. They have to be adults. They have to have some kind of history of substance use disorder, SUD. They don't need to have just come directly from treatment, but they have to either admit or show documentation that they've had a history. And that comes back to our license-exemption status. Willingness to engage. So there's a lot of people looking for a lot of different things. Some people, they just want a house, they just want a bed to sleep in. Other people want to live that self-directed recovery life and learn, fill in some gaps, learn what they've been doing, learn what they can do better, and they want to come to a place where they can engage in a program, be supported. We do look for individuals that are looking for a longer-term solution than just 30 days or less for a lot of reasons. One, if we have less than six months, it doesn't really give us the amount of time that we want to work with an individual. Also, because our main value is the environment that we provide for those that are in the house, it's really important to me to protect that environment. And that means not having strangers come in and moving out every couple of weeks. So it doesn't mean that they're committed to staying there. It's always a resident-driven length of stay, but we look for it in the early interviews. We look to try to find individuals that seem like they're going to commit and do what they need to do to stay with us. I've got 115 more slides, so I'll try to speed up a little bit. All right. Where do we get our residents from? So about 70% come from treatment, either a detox, which is uncommon, just because of the stability that we really need in our residents when they come in. Many of them come from longer-term treatments. We get some from Wilmington Treatment Center, some from Crossroads, and other facilities. And there are some people that didn't just come from a facility, but they're involved in some kind of IOP or outpatient care. We have gotten about 15% from jail or prison, and another 15% that were individuals that, I won't say off the streets, but they were living somewhere else, and they recognized it for their recovery journey to continue. They needed to get to a safer environment. And I talk about departure or graduation when individuals leave. It's really important to us that we don't just give them a hug, say thanks for being here, and send them on their way, but make sure that all of their basic needs, we think back to that web of things, make sure that they have a plan and solution in place for all of those things. As far as expansion, so this is what we're really excited about, and this is what's going to turn our single house on this property in James City to what I can more honestly call a campus, so our Campus of Hope. So we are about 90-ish percent, 95% complete with this new expansion. It's 1,400 more square feet. It's an out parcel. It's a completely separate building. It'll give us four additional bedrooms in which we will house one additional. So we'll have one team member, one senior resident there, and then five more additional residents. We look at the funding of our program. So I believe in the lean startup model and doing as much as we can with as little as we have, and I think we do a whole heck of a lot for just about $115,000, $120,000 a year. We look at our funding sources. A big component of that, this is good for the longevity and the sustainability of our program, but also an important part of our program is that we have individuals that are there, pay for their stay to be there. They pay a program fee to be involved. That's really important for us because that's, as you see, about 62% of the income that we get is from individuals paying to be there and participate in the program. It's also extremely important, as I talked about, that continuum of care for somebody to go without having to pay for themselves and not having any financial responsibility for a period of time, and then abruptly have to fully support themselves financially. Again, that's too big of a change, too much of an opportunity for somebody to have a struggle. And then you see on there the Craven County funds, about 12%, and we get 21, about 21% from grants and 5% from donations. Looking at our expansion costs, about $220,000 is, will be the final budget and the total expense for the expansion, and that's what the funding stack looks like for that. The biggest part that we use the county funding for is for our scholarship program. So it's our intention with the money to reduce barriers to entry. A lot of individuals that have finally gone off the treatment, they come back and they've burned all the bridges that they have, and they've exhausted all their financial resources. So we don't want that to be a barrier to somebody getting the kind of support that they need. So we use the scholarship funding or the Craven County funds as a stipend to cover their program fee first at 100% in the first month, and then again, helping them crawl, walk, run. We use it to supplement or to provide a subsidy essentially for their program fee up until month seven. And then everything beyond month seven, they're 100% responsible for covering themselves. What that looks like or what it breaks down to is about $33 a day per resident for that first month, and then down to $15 a day for that month's two to six. And these are funds that are not given to us, and then we spend it. Once we've provided value on a service to an individual, then we get requests or requests for reimbursement. So that's another important thing for me. I don't want the money, or I don't want the organization to have the money unless we've already used it or have spent it and done something to impact the community. So that's the model that we've kind of developed and come up with. We've also done some other things. So we think about the residents that are in the house and everything we're doing there to support their recovery, but really, we decided early on that if we have this platform and this organization, the community, we want to do as much as we can to extend that impact and serve the community at large. So two other initiatives that we've been involved in is two different awareness campaigns. In 2024, we did an anti-stigma campaign. 2025, we're about to launch the Fatal Fix campaign. So this is just public awareness of the harm, the risks of substances and what they can do. Another thing that we've done is serving the middle school with a speaker that we've brought in now for, we've done it twice, and we're going to do it two more times. Really, now we're helping facilitate that and just be the host for that event. But it was a couple-of-hour event where all the eighth graders in the county, a very critical age, eighth graders in the county came in and they heard a story, and they see world-recognized speaker, certainly nationally-recognized and acclaimed speaker, come in and talk about the importance of mental health, of awareness, of community, of supporting one another, of reaching out for help, all the things that come before somebody struggles with an addiction or substance. Resident outcomes. So early on, we were operating more as a Level Two from that chart that I showed earlier. And during that time, in 2022, we had 10 residents come through the door. We had six that stayed there for at least six months before they departed. And then when we brought in a program director, we really elevated our model and started operating as a Level Three. Since that time, we've had 25 residents that have come in. And I only left that number on there. That includes people that have come in and stayed for less than 30 days. So one of the things we try to do, find individuals that we're the best program for. We don't want to be the best program for everybody. We want to be the best fit for those that we're the best program for. And some of that is trying to make educated guesses about how well somebody is going to perform and how good of a fit it is. Same thing from their perspective, too. They're trying to listen to what we have to say, trying to come out and view the facility, see what's expected of them, see how they'll be supported. And with somebody in early recovery, sometimes your aspirations and your goals can shift early. So with that said, 19 individuals stayed there for more than 30 days. 11 of those have graduated. We still have some that are there, and we've had a relatively low rate of having to dismiss anybody. We do as much as we can. Once you're in the house, we do as much as we can to continue to work with and support you, get you connected with more services. But there's been a few cases where it hasn't been an option, where they've exhausted all options. Average length of stay for those that had stayed there for more than 30 days is 14.25 months. Again, this is resident-driven length of stay, so it's always up to the individual when they depart. Well, our goal is to make sure that they are there for at least six months because that gives us enough time to really work with them, allow them to stabilize in their life, get connected with some resources, and have the best foundation. But really, the model that we are following is designed to have people there for up to two years. A lot of the research about the neuroplasticity and brain changes that happen in somebody in recovery, they show that it really can take up to two years for them to stabilize. So we do, we have had some individuals there for up to two years. The current residents that we have, we got six residents that are there, plus one house manager. Five of those are full-time employed. One is part-time employed, looking for another job. And then we have one guy that just got there about three weeks ago. So when somebody comes in, we usually, we don't encourage, this is one of the reasons that we front-load some of that, the scholarship in the beginning, because we want them to not have to race out and find all the solutions and put their whole life back together immediately. We want them to have the opportunity, know that their program fee is taken care of, so that they have the freedom and flexibility to get plugged into the AA and NA, to get plugged into social services if they're eligible, find outpatient care, and allow their bodies to rest and relax. So that's another major barrier that we've seen with people in recovery is that the minute that they get out of treatment, they want to race and get everything, like make up for lost time and put everything back together very quickly. And that, again, it's another major barrier to long-term recovery. So really, everything that we do is designed to looking at what are the major barriers, what are the critical vulnerabilities in somebody's long-term recovery, and how do we help support that or mitigate that? The value to the community, again, we try to provide value many different ways. We provide value to the care providers. So back to the resources and assets that we already have in our community, for those care providers, our value add to them is helping improve client outcomes. You can work with somebody for one hour a week or two hours a week, but if they don't have a stable environment to go home to, then the work that you can do with them can only be so effective. That's an evidence-based continuum of care, as we talked about. There's one study in 2007 that showed just how effective living in a group environment, a sober-living environment like this can be. They showed that of this group of participants that they studied, 64.8% of them had a return to use after coming out of treatment, a return to use or relapse within 12 months. For those that went into a sober-living or a recovery residence, it dropped down to 15%. So that's a tremendous value to just being, participating in this kind of program. As far as economic value, so the one study that we looked at earlier on was a RTI study about TROSA, the TROSA model, so RTI in Raleigh. They did an extended study about the TROSA program, and they tried to, trying to quantify what's the economic impact on the community. What they found was that their economic impact for everybody that they served was about $17,500. That's a reduction in social services, ER visits, policing, many of the other things that would occur, the expenses that would be borne by the local community. I could stand up here and talk all day long, but let's see. Questions and sharing?
Okay. Questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Please, Ms. Smith?
Question one is, community awareness. How does someone needing the program find your group?
That's a great question. So one of the biggest challenges that we have in this mental health industry-wide is that the best resources for mental health or for addiction are also the best-kept secrets, just because of the nature of it. This is a big part of the stigma. You know, if you or I went out, or Commissioner Hunt went down to Jacksonville and tried a restaurant, and she loved it, and she thought it was amazing, she'd come back and tell all of her friends and neighbors. Unfortunately, if somebody's loved one goes and they get the best treatment in the world, they're not running home to put it in their Christmas newsletter and share it with all their friends and family. So with that in mind, we are constantly out in the community any place that we can be. We're going to, we go to monthly breakfasts, we go to RAI meetings. We also spend a lot of time talking to discharge planners at some of those, I hate to say lead source, but some of the places where we might get residents from. And then speaking with the local service organizations and clubs. And if you know anybody that would like me to come give a talk for 15, 20, 30 minutes, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. My next question is, if a person decides to leave the program early and determines when they go back to the community, that they actually need more services, do you accept them back?
That's a great question. And I think what, one testament to how good of a program we provide and how much of a family unit we create within that program. I realize a lot of individuals that are coming to us, maybe they never in their life had a safe, supportive environment where they could be. So yes, we've had two individuals actually recently, one that went to Wilmington, that moved down to Wilmington for an employment opportunity, was going to live in a sober-living down there for a period of time, realized that this support that he had was too much of a loss transitioning out. So we brought him back about two months later. I said, another gentleman, he was with us for a shorter period of time, but really a stellar resident, doing all of the programming, really ahead in all of his personal development, getting very plugged in, and he wanted to go move back with family. He tried that. Two weeks later, he said, hey, do you guys mind having me back?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So thank you for the presentation. You answered all my questions I had written down. So I would just like to ask if you could let us know when Mr. Tony Huffman comes back. Some of us on the board would like to attend that presentation that he gives.
Will absolutely do that. Do you know about when we'll have dates for that? It'll be around May, but once we get dates.
Thank you. And I would just say, bridging the gap is critical. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I would just like to say that this program certainly fits in with the county is trying to accomplish. to accomplish in this area, and it is something to look at.
Thank you.
I aired, when I introduced Garrett Biss, I neglected to introduce the young lady in the second row by the name of Kim Breel. I think you two were the founder and the two co-founders of this organization. Kim has been very instrumental in making this thing work, so we welcome you here also. Are there any other questions?
Got nothing. Thank you again for this opportunity to share this, and I'd like to come back and do it more often.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome to stay?
Thank you.
Or you're welcome to leave, whichever will suit you. You've got someplace else to go. Okay, the next item is item number three. Craven County Board of Education, request for approval of repair and renovation projects. Jerome Williams, Jr., correct?
Correct.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, other commissioners. On behalf of Craven County Board of Education, we're on requesting approval of the repair and renovation projects in the amount of $240,000 and $274,040. Funding will be used to utilize to cover HJ McDonald Middle School, Unit Number 10, heat pump system replacement in the amount of $54,750. Vanceboro Farm Life Elementary School GM Unit Number Two, replacement in the amount of $71,840. And the Vanceboro Farm Life Elementary School Art Room Unit Number 14, replacement in the amount of $147,045. Funding for these projects are through the lottery and repair and renovation funds, and we attach the quotes that we receive back for those projects. The grand total altogether is $274,040. I said the grand total of all the projects, $274,040.
Okay, any questions? Or?
I have one question, maybe, Jack, you could answer it. This seems to have, well, a program that we have as far as maintenance with the schools. I see it's a separate thing because of the lottery, but that's my only question.
So, of course, Citizen Stacy Lee's here tonight, but about a year ago, Stacy and Craig and I talked, there was some additional lottery monies that are provided quarterly to counties for the use by schools. We started a project, Stacy focused at that time on air conditioners. They've got so many of them. I think some schools have one in every classroom.
Correct.
Probably won't jinx them here because it's summertime, but anyway, they tried to get ahead by using this money outside of the budget process to take care of some of those issues. This was relatively new funding that came down to the county.
Okay, it is a duplication, though, that's what.
Yes, it is additional capital.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Williams? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
No, move in a second.
Motion in a second. Adam Clark, please call or roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Thank you very much. And by the way, in our audience, soon to be departed, I guess departed, he has departed, a familiar face to us, Mr. Stacy Lee, who has come before us many, many times, and he retired like a month ago?
June 30th.
June 30th, not even a month. So he's still a rookie retiree. You know, we also have Mr. Stewart Blunt with us, and he is not retired. Well, he retired and he's now back to work. So glad to have you both here tonight. Next item is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Do you have any, Vice Chair?
No, sir, no one signed it.
Okay. Number five, consent agenda. Consent agenda tonight includes the minutes of the May 21 and June 2 reconvened sessions, the minutes of June 16 regular session, tax releases and refunds, economic development, request to set a public hearing for Project Enterprise, register of deeds, permittance, LLC contract implementation for a budget amendment, and for donation checks for the Sheriff's Department budget amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion in a second. Adam Clark, would you please call or roll?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Item number six. Elections, a request to adopt a resolution approving the purchase of voting equipment. Susan Williams is here to talk to us tonight. Susan, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As you know, the Elections Department started looking at the replacement of our DS 200 tabulators. They are outdated and it's time to replace them before we have a catastrophic failure in an election event. So there is a lot of steps that you have to follow to replace the equipment or a part of a voting system. So we began that process. We presented the commissioners with a preliminary recommendation after we had test, or, I'm sorry, after we had the first demos of the two systems that are certified within the state. And so we could purchase the whole new system, but there's really, for tax dollars and spending, being beneficial to our taxpayers, we see no point in that. The system we have works great, we just need an update. And so we need to replace just the tabulator. We will not buy, those of you who came to that demonstration, they had a nice shiny new box. We're not buying the new box, we're just getting the part that goes into the box because there's nothing wrong with the boxes we have. And so we just want to replace those tabulators. So it was approved in the budget. The board, my board, followed through with the other steps that they had to do. We had to set up a test, a simulated election with that equipment, and with the state, we did that, completed that. And we have now submitted all of our steps to the state board. They've approved it and signed it and sent it back and said, we're ready now for the final step. Final step is to give you our final resolution and ask you to adopt and approve it.
Thank you. The resolution we passed as part of our budget, so the financing part has already been approved by this board. All we're doing now is giving her the go-ahead and accepting the resolution and approving the purchase. So do I have a motion to make that happen?
No, move.
Second.
A motion and a second. So a motion to accept the resolution and approve the purchase of the DS 300 tabulators, which have been budgeted in the FY 25, 26 budget. Adam Clark?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Set. Item number seven. The vice is going to come forward and talk to us about special appropriations.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, pleasure to be here with you tonight. As normal, we're here unfortunately because of Senate Bill 473, where these are items where one of you may serve on a board that could not be considered with the budget process we adopted in June. So we're going to go individually through these items. The first one, because Commissioner Mitchell's not here, we will not need a recusal, but it is for Allies for Cherry Point tomorrow. As per previous years, Allies for Cherry Point tomorrow has requested $25,000 from the general fund to cover membership fees for that organization. If you remember, they are an advocate for Cherry Point and FRC East. They do provide services to Marines and advocating for them, jobs, economic development, all those good things. They came in January and gave you a mid-year update. I believe the mayor of Havelock presented to you with Mr. Finlayson. And the request is consistent with what we have approved in previous years. So that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions about it if you'd like.
Do I have a motion to approve the appropriation for ACT?
I moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you need a roll call on each of these?
Yes, sir.
We're going to get the call roll a bunch tonight.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to skip to number C. Hope Mission, this is from the general fund dollars. Hope Mission is a recovery campus, I think a lot like what Garrett said, they do a lot of different things. This is in partnership with the Sheriff's Office. A couple of years ago, we started purchasing beds through county funding to get folks who are incarcerated now that do have a substance abuse disorder into treatment, and they provide a healthy living environment there. It's one of the options that we want to provide, lots of options to folks, and it's one of those. This $76,650 is the amount for six beds paid out of the general fund. Not to confuse you, there's a total of these six beds, nine beds under a federal grant called COSAP with the Sheriff's Office, and then another six beds is in the opioid contract, which we're going to cover in just a minute. So this would be out of the general fund dollars of the county.
And? Oh, gosh. May I have a motion to recuse?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we recuse Commissioner Hunt of any discussion and voting on this funding and ask her to leave the room.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Hunt? You are excused. Do I have a motion to approve the Hope Mission general fund amount of $650?
No, move. Second.
A motion and a second. Adam Clark?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item D.
Can somebody get her back in?
We got, she got to stand.
Another one, too. Okay, she got one other one, yeah, okay.
So this will be item D. It's the same exact thing, six beds out of the opioid settlement fund. At your last June meeting, you passed a resolution which allocated how we would spend the dollars. This is consistent with that resolution, so this time I'd ask you for approval of the $76,650 from the opioid settlement fund for Hope Mission.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Adam Clark?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Hunt back in?
Okay, because I got so excited the first time. The next one is C1A, Craven 100 Alliance. I believe Chairman Booker, you would need a recusal.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we would recuse Commissioner Denny Booker from any discussion and voting on this matter and ask him to leave the room. I make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vice Sheriff, you'll take over on that one.
Yeah, Commissioners, this is the annual contribution made to the Craven 100 Alliance. If you remember, it's a public-private partnership. The public side is Craven County, the city of New Bern, and the city of Havelock. It is 50 cents per capita, which comes to a grand total of $50,360, which would cover you for the next fiscal year.
Before we entertain a motion, is any questions for the county manager? Hearing none, the budget appropriation would be for $50,360. I have a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hunt, a second from Commissioner Mark. Any further discussion on a motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is Realize U252, Commissioner Howard.
Mr. Chairman, if you will allow, I'll make the motion that we recuse Commissioner Howard from any discussion and voting on the funding for Realize 252 and ask him to leave the room.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? I just have it.
Garrett and Kim made this one real easy for me tonight because they had a presentation right before me, but this is the annual funding. As Garrett notated on one of his last slides, it would be $15,000 for scholarships into the program, $5,000 for an awareness campaign, and $6,200 for the Tony Hoffman Guest Speaker Series for eighth graders, for a total of $26,200.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Adam Clark?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the last one will be Highway 70 Corridor Commission, that would be Commissioner Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that the board would ask Commissioner Mark to leave the room and recuse him from any discussion and voting on funding for Highway 70 corridor.
All in favor?
No.
Get a second.
Second.
Get a second. You got it.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All in roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Okay.
Highway 70 Corridor Commission is an advocacy committee for Highway 70 and the improvements that we've seen over the last several decades this group's been in existence. The $25,000 is in conjunction with Carteret, Craven, Lenore, Wayne, and Johnston Counties, each paying an equal allotment of $25,000. Continued priorities are advocating for additional dollars to make that an interstate. Biggest road block at this time would be the Kinston bypass and some funding challenges within DOT. There's definitely value there. I also serve on that board along with Commissioner Mark. So $25,000 is consistent with what we funded in previous years.
Good.
I like that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
One last time.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Okay. Approved?
All approved. Thank you. I have them. Thank you.
Item number eight is appointments. Under pending, Commissioners, we have Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, the Highway 70 Corridor Committee, Craven County Planning Board, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and Volunteer Agricultural Districts, District 1 and 6. And effective 6/23/25, there's a resignation in your packet from Judith Sinclair, is vacating the seats on the Craven Aging Planning Board and the Senior Tarheel Legislating Committee. We have no pending applications for those. So be aware of those under current. Under our current appointments, the first one is the Craven County ABC Board, and my name is on the top of the list, and I do not seek reappointment. So do we have a motion or a nomination for someone for that seat?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Chadwick Howard.
Okay. Mr. Howard has been nominated. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation, he will be appointed. Second one, Mr. Guy Gregg. And by the way, I neglected to recognize him. He happens to be sitting here tonight. Mr. Gregg, welcome.
Thank you.
He does seek reappointment. Are there any other nominations for that seat?
Mr. Chairman, I would, go ahead.
I would nominate Mr. Gregg for reappointment.
Okay. And are there any others? Hearing none, Mr. Gregg will be reappointed by acclamation. The third one for Mr. Edward Hines, who also seeks reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I would make that recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Hines has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Hines will be reappointed. Appointed. Under the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Kitty Hardison resigned for the United Way and other nonprofit seat. The JCPC recommends appointing current member Angela Wilson to fill the vacancy, and her resignation is attached and her application is attached. So do I hear any other nominations for that seat? Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, I recommend Angela Wilson.
Okay. Hearing that, Angela Wilson will be appointed for that seat. JCPC recommends appointing current member, already got that, sorry. JCPC recommends appointing Marissa Byer for the at-large seat vacated by Angela Wilson, and her application is attached. Is there a nomination for Ms. Byer?
Nominate Ms. Byer.
Okay. Ms. Byer's been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Ms. Byer will be appointed for the seat vacated by Ms. Wilson. And I believe the bottom says to fill the at-large vacancy, and mentions that Ms. Byer previously served as the Health Director appointee and upon retirement has continued to serve as an officer. So that completes our current appointments. You'll notice under upcoming for the EMS Advisory Council, there are a couple of names, Brian McGuire and Michelle Smith. And then under the Fireman's Relief Board of Trustees, Daniel New and Mark Dale. And under Crime Prevention Council, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Dora Bullock. So we'll address those future meetings. Okay. Number nine, county attorney report.
Report, Mr. Chairman.
Will accept that. Thank you. Number 10 is a petition of citizens. Vice Chair, do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we have three citizens who have signed up this evening to speak. The first is Dr. Tyrone Brown.
You have three minutes, and if you would start by giving your name and your address, please.
My name is Tyrone Brown. I currently live at 1414 Harrison Street, Apartment B, New Bern, North Carolina, 28560.
Welcome.
Today I stand before you not just with words, but with the weight of too many names, too many candles, and too many dreams cut short. Gun violence is tearing through our communities, our streets, our schools, our homes, and in many African-American neighborhoods. It's become a daily reality, but let me be clear, this is not normal. It is not acceptable, and it must end. Behind every statistic is a life, a child who won't graduate, a mother who won't stop grieving, a community that keeps asking why. We cannot afford to grow numb to the sounds of gunshots or the sight of yet another memorial. This crisis is not just about guns, it's about poverty, lack of opportunity, broken trust, generations of pain. But we are more than our struggles. We are resilient, we are powerful, and united. We have the right to live without fear. Our children deserve to go to school without having to worry about being shot. Our elders deserve to sit on their porches and enjoy the sunlight. Change starts with us, demanding better, standing together, and refusing to stay silent. So to every life lost, we remember you. To every life still here, we fight for you. Enough is enough. It's time to heal, time to rebuild, and time to rise. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Albert Lester.
Hello, Mr. Lester.
Commissioners, Assistant Manager, County Manager, and Assistant County Manager. Appreciate y'all. Work that you're doing, we really appreciate it. Couple of citizens in my neighborhood want to thank the person that comes around to pick up our recyclable. He's doing a wonderful job. She wanted him to know that he stopped his truck to get, to help her get her garbage out to the truck, and he told her, ma'am, just put your can outside, and I'll make sure that I pick up that recyclable once a month for you. You don't have to struggle to get it out. The young lady that I talked about, she's a senior, and we really appreciate that, and he's doing a wonderful job. So the director of the department's doing a wonderful job. And so far, we haven't had any complaints of lateness, late pickup, nobody getting picked up. And I also want to ditto what that young man just said. He's absolutely correct. We're working hard every day to save our young people. It's up to each and every one of us to convey to our young people that violence is not the answer. We must communicate with each other. We're not going to all we agree. We must communicate with each other. In order to stop this violence, we have to talk with one another without getting angry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lester, we'll make sure that the people who run that company recognize that driver or that gentleman that runs that route. We'll get that word to them. Okay. Thank you.
And next, we have Pastor Ray Griffin.
Yeah, I appreciate what the man just said about the kids. I'm going to bring that up. Ray Griffin, 1981, Streets Ferry Road, Vanspor, North Carolina, the heartbeat of Craven County. Why is America such a great nation? Because God has blessed America. The Bible tells us blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. I believe the American dream was placed in the hands of our founding fathers of Almighty God. No nation has ever had such a Christian beginning as America has had. The original colonies were founded because of Christian faith, and they stated the purpose was to fulfill the glory of God in the advancement of Christian faith. Our American government is rooted in faith and Almighty God. When America declared its independence from Great Britain, they declared dependence upon Almighty God. In 1778, James Madison, the framer and the architect of the Federal Constitution, the fourth president of the United States, said, "We have staked the whole future of American civilization not upon the power of government. We have staked the future upon the capacity of each and all of us to govern ourselves, to sustain ourselves according to the Ten Commandments." Today, right now, we cannot even post the Ten Commandments in the schools, on the classroom as the gentleman just talked about sadly in our schoolrooms today. What is there? Police officers. And where we turn. We need God in America again. George Washington's first inaugural address stated, "Our fervent prayers are to the Almighty God who rules over the universe, who presides in the council of nations, and who provides aid and can supply every human need." No nation never had such a Christian beginning as America. But I must sadly say, I confess to you this day, that our national heritage is in decay, our Christian values are in retreat. We need God in America again. The opening today, we see of the Pride Movement, transgender issues, disposal of unwanted, unborn babies, the breakup of the family, the obsession with self and materialism, all these figure the nation on its last legs. And if America doesn't get born again, she would join the graveyard of the nations. The answer to America is not in the schoolhouse, not in the state house or the White House, but in the church house. The only hope for America lies in his churches and the people. And St. Corinthians says, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sins and will heal their land." If we can't have revival in America, let us have revival in ourselves. Let us look at what's going on. You say, "I'm only one, I can't do everything, but I can do something. And what I can do ought to be done by the grace of God." We need to say, "God bless America," and let it begin with you and I. We need to stand up, get fired up, get prayed up, and keep looking up to what is going on in our system, just like the gentleman just talked about. He said, "The honest God's truth." What have we done now without the Ten Commandments and the police officers in the rooms? It will only happen if we say, "God bless America." You and I need to be not part of the solution, but we need to be part of the problem solve. And if we can solve this problem, if we stand up, get fired up, get back to where we were, and I could read you many more about what happened. Abraham Lincoln.
But your time's up.
That's it.
That was the bell rang. That's the bell ringing.
But Abraham Lincoln said, "Get your Bible out." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot earlier with you, I did get word from our IT Director, Mr. Bennett, that there was an issue with the live streaming tonight. He has recorded the meeting, and it will be posted tonight to make sure folks have an opportunity to view that. So I just want to let folks know. And second, just keep those county officials and city officials in our prayers that are dealing with some serious flooding issues in Texas and central North Carolina. We all know what that's like, and our prayers are with them. And if there's anything we can do, we'll certainly be available for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners report. Who would like to go first? Karen, Commissioner Hunt.
So many things, so many good things in the last two weeks, but I narrowed it down to one thing. It was my honor and privilege when I spoke at the Havelock Senior Meeting last week to share on behalf of Craven County Board of Commissioners that we passed the budget with not raising any taxes. They were very happy to hear that, and they are going out and about sharing the good work that's being done here. So thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Howard?
Wednesday I will be having a town hall. The fire station, 6:30 PM. Issues will be DOT update per the request of citizens, speed limit issues in a certain area, county update. We'll have a couple of county departments there, and the sheriff will be there. So Wednesday, 6:30 PM, Township Six Fire Station.
Wednesday being tomorrow?
Yes.
I mean, Tuesday after.
Two days, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I only have one thing, and I was going to mention our prayers. County manager mentioned, our prayers need to be with the folks in Texas. We had a terrible situation seven years ago, but I don't recall any houses or cars floating down the river. It's a horrible situation with, guessing there'll be 100 deaths by the time they're done, and a lot of them are children, so very sad. Keep them in your prayers. And if you can, there'll be, I'm sure, plenty of organizations that are worthwhile that you could support financially, help those folks get back on their feet. I would just like to add that on the Fourth of July, my wife and I went to the palace, Trillon Palace, at 9:00 AM, and we heard the Pike and Bugle Corps march down the street and march into the palace, through around the back of the palace, after which the governor came and gave a very brief comment, followed by a person, a gentleman, wearing a uniform, reading the Declaration of Independence. And I've heard it before, I've got it in writing, but I couldn't quote three sentences from that, I don't think. As I was watching the Declaration of Independence being spoken, I looked to my left, and I saw a young lady, probably, well, I found out later, she is a high school rising senior. She was mouthing every word of the Declaration of Independence along with the gentleman who was speaking it. That was impressive. And I spoke to her afterward, and I said, "Were you, did I see you actually reciting it?" She goes, "Well, I did some of it," and her mother said she knows it all. So pretty impressive, pretty impressive to see a young person do that. It was a very nice, and this is an annual event. The grounds are open from 9 till 12. So next year, if you've got nothing to do on the morning of the Fourth, it was a nice crowd. There were hundreds of people, and it was a beautiful day. So I enjoyed that very much. Last thing I have would be, we have two elected officials, we have an elected official and one of our department managers in the back row, Josh Boer, who is our Register of Deeds, and Leslie Young, who is our tax administrator. So welcome to both of you. Thank you for being here tonight. Anybody have anything else? Hearing nothing, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn.